Good evening and welcome to the Norwood School Committee meeting of Wednesday, February 13, 2019. Could you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we get started, I wanted, I have been asked to read a statement from David Catania. With regrets, I am not attending the meeting tonight because I have contracted the flu and I'm running a fever. While I feel it is my civic duty to attend, debate, and vote at every single school committee meeting during my term, I cannot in good conscience risk the health of my fellow committee members and administration staff. Everyone is working hard for our schools and it would not be fair to have the important work of the school committee impacted solely by my desire to attend tonight's meeting. Sincerely, David Catania. So, we all wish him well and we are happy that he's keeping his germs at home. Next order of business is approval of minutes. Looking to approve minutes from both January 23rd and February 6th. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Teresa, seconded by Maura. Any discussion? Put it to a vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Correspondence. Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
None at this time.
Okay. Warrants. We do have warrants for the committee to sign this evening, but since it's only been a week since we met last, we don't have as many as usual. We have one payroll amount in the more, one payroll warrant in the amount of $94,734.63. One buildings and grounds warrant in the amount of $15,334.14. And one accounts payable warrant in the amount of $126,846.19 for a grand total of $236,914.96. I will ask the committee to sign at your convenience. Thank you. Now is time for public forum when we invite members of the community to come before us and speak on anything that is under the purview of the committee. And hang on just a minute, I'm going to get my timer. Forgot to set that up before the meeting. As I mentioned last week, this is an old phone. It's no longer even active with a phone number and it's on airplane mode, but it does have a timer on it, which is handy. And we ask that committee members, members of the community can speak to us about anything under our purview. We ask you to limit your comments to approximately three minutes. And we will ask you to state your name and address at the beginning. We have done a signup list and so I would like to invite Julie Barber Isa and Denise Kylie and Katie Neil Rizzo. Are you coming with them? Okay, all, the three of you. So I'd like to ask by each, asking each of you to state your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Julie Barber Isa. I live at 264 Railroad Avenue.
And I'm Denise Kylie. I live at 18 Avon Road.
I'm Katie Neil Rizzo. I live at 40 Prospect Avenue. Thank you very much.
So hello, everyone, and thank you for your time tonight. We are here tonight to announce the formation of One Norwood, a municipal ballot question committee supporting the passage of a propositional, a Proposition Two and a Half Operational Override in Norwood for the June 3, 2019 election. We believe in a future for Norwood with fully funded schools, long-term fiscal security, and quality services for the entire town. Norwood is a strong, vibrant community that we are proud to call home.
Our vision for Norwood is a community that provides fundamental educational services to our children. We believe in meeting the state's mass core standards, providing guidance councils to our most vulnerable children, and to face 21st century demands for technology, literacy, and foreign language. It is our duty to ensure that all our towns' children will graduate college-ready or career-ready. Though a substantial portion of the deficit currently reflects on the schools, the impact will be felt by the general government as well, and those cuts should be announced shortly.
Over the next few months, we will be launching a grassroots effort in our community. We'll need everyone's support and feet on the ground to spread the word, fundraise, and campaign. We are parents, grandparents, retirees, public servants, educators, neighbors, and friends, working together to support a stable financial future for Norwood. You can join us at Onenorwood.com and follow us on Facebook and Instagram.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next person on the list is Mary Wesley. I'll ask you to start with your name and address again. Thank you.
My name is Mary Wesley. I live at 190th and Washington Street. I'm also a fourth grade teacher at the Cleveland School. I've been before the committee several times over the last few years talking about the devastating effects that budget cuts have on our children. One of the things that is apparent is a lot of times we don't get those cuts back. A really great example of that would be our elementary library. Our elementary library is working this year on a zero budget. I don't know anybody who would go to work, go to a department, and not even have a dollar to buy a pencil. So how are those guys working? Well, we've got people like our reading specialists, our librarian writing grants. We have them buying books out of their own pocket. We have teachers purchasing books. As a Norwood resident, I find it appalling that we don't have these kind of services for the kids. So that just brings it to some things that have happened in the past. So it's been a very devastating time for teachers, seeing the cuts that are happening. So the first thing I'd like to say is how much I appreciate what you guys are doing. I know that your job is awful. I feel the impact you're making the decision. All I can say is that last week I stood on the lawn, holding a sign saying, "Save our schools." I was really upset that we were even considering closing the Willet or the Callahan, but I understood that you have to balance budgets. But I held a sign saying, "Save our schools," and when I was driving home, I thought, "This is crazy. What we're really trying to say is save our children." And this town override is about our future. Our children deserve to have a police and fire department that is fully funded and that all the staff members are trained. Our children deserve to grow up in a town where the DPW is funded, where they can have the kind of town we're all proud of. And most importantly, our children deserve to have a school that is funded. We are short-staffed. We don't have the budgets that we need for things. And all I can say is, what I'm thinking of is, "Save our children." We have a responsibility to the kids in our town. My kids come into the classroom every year, they're smiling, they're laughing, they have no idea what's happening tonight because they trust us to take care of them, like our parents took care of us before. So you have an awful job, I get it. I'm hoping that the town will smarten up and that they'll take care of the kids. And the last thing I'd like to say to the residents of Norwood is, it would be nice if the teacher bashing would be stopped. We're not drunks, we're not greedy. We take care of our children every day. I'd also like to say that we need to stop doing things to the children. You know, there was a recent thread online stating...
Please just finish your thought, absolutely.
A thread online stating that we had a high ELL population, which we do. But then it went into a really nasty part, saying that the kids were illegal immigrants. They are not. They are children who live in our neighborhoods who deserve a good education. So vote any way you want, but please, let's just keep in mind that everything we're doing is for the future of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else tonight who would like to speak at public forum? Seeing none, I will declare public forum closed. Thank you. Dr. Thompson, do we have any announcements to the, tonight?
Yes, I just have some good news and I guess officially make sure, I know I've shared this with the, with the committee before, but we have received the Career Pathways Grant from the Department of Ed. That is for $10,000 and that will give us seed money to start our first career pathways. And I have reached out to Dr. Gallagher and his team to explain the process and how they're going to use that $10,000 this spring into the fall to set up our first two programs. So we're very excited about that and want to commend the work of Dr. Gallagher and the high school staff in pursuing that grant. And it was a tremendous amount of work and effort to do that, but it is moving us in the right direction. So that's my, my announcement.
All right. And then we also have one other announcement we'd like to make. We'd like to let everyone know that we have updated the budget webpage. And so Dr. Thompson will pull that up. It was right there, just a moment ago.
Well, I let it go to sleep, sorry.
That's okay.
Then I have to remember my password under pressure.
So under the, the school webpage, if you go to the school committee tab across there and then go down to budget information, we have updated this website. There's some general budget process information, specific information, well, I guess maybe we want to click on that.
Yep.
So general process information shows a timeline of how the budget is done through, goes through the town. And there's a flow chart that shows how revenues and expenses are handled town-wide. And so you can check that out. And then under the FY '20, if you go on the left-hand side, yeah, then FY '20 budget, there's a bunch of specific information there about the level services request, the, what the budget process will look like, has, what we've done so far for the budget without the override, some information about what would be included in the override, some analysis and reports, and some links to the Budget Balancing Committee page of the town website. So you can get all that detail about what the Budget Balancing Committee has been doing for the FY '20. Under the five-year plan, there is information on the strategic plan and information, the presentation on the five-year projections that we have made. And then there's a budget FAQs section, and this is a work in progress, but it does answer some basic questions and includes some links to the state website and so you can learn more about the governor's budget and about Chapter 70 financing and about what an override is and things like that. So we just wanted everybody to be aware that this information is out there. Any questions? All right. Thank you for that. Then we, we'll move on to budget. So Ms. Ellis, there's a request for an FY '19 budget transfer?
Yep, there should be two of them.
Okay.
The first one is from Principal Ferreira at the Balch, for few early adopter teachers to attend London Learning Conference, from P code 0870, textbooks of $1,000 into 0654 for conferences.
Is there a motion to approve this transfer? Thank you, Teresa, seconded by Michelle. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And the other one?
The second one is from Principal Riley, to support the purchase of 100 school library books, from P code 966, the instructional supply line into their library book line of 1505.
Is there a motion to approve this transfer? Thank you, Michelle, seconded by Teresa. Any discussion? Maura?
Yes, thank you. I just think it's prudent to point out that this transfer is necessary because we cut library books down to zero last year to balance the budget, which is why this is necessary, because there should be money in that account. But there is not because we can't afford it.
So all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay. Then we move on. Anything else from FY '19? Oh, okay. Then we move on to the, we go back actually to the school committee website and pull up that progression Excel spreadsheet so everybody can see that.
Progression today.
Yep.
Okay, why is this not changing?
It's so weird that it's frozen on what we were looking at before.
Oh, you know why, because I need to end this. Hang on a minute. Threw me a curveball.
Okay. So every year we go through the process of, starting with a first-pass budget and some guesses as to what the deficit will look like, and then there are adjustments, both to our request and to the, the target budget. So we've been keeping this running spreadsheet so that we can track what changes have been made and what, where we currently stand. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page. Our initial budget request was $47,887,000. The first-pass budget balancing estimate for the amount of money available was $43,771,000, leaving us with a $4.1 million deficit, a rounding. At our school committee meeting in, the first school committee meeting in January, we voted to reduce our request by $1 million because, as we discussed, that had been, that's circuit-breaker money. It was something that was figured into the five-year projections for the override calculation. So we put that correction in there. So that brought our deficit down to 3.1 million. After the most recent Budget Balancing Committee meeting on January 28th, and then there was a minor correction made on January 31st, and I'll remind everyone that that correction impacted the FY '20 numbers, but did not impact the five-year projections. At that meeting, we were pleased to announce that we had received much more than we had originally anticipated from state aid, and so that increased our target by $706,000. So that meant that, we didn't change our request then, but that brought our deficit down to 2.4 million. At our last meeting, you will recall that we added one special education teacher at the high school to meet the needs there. We eliminated all Coakley Middle School and Norwood High School Clubs and Activities. We eliminated all extracurricular fine arts. We eliminated the Coakley Middle School late bus. We eliminated Norwood High School Athletics. And we closed the Willet. In closing the Willet, we effectively reduced our budget by four FTEs, full-time equivalents. So we eliminated the salary lines for one nurse, one secretary, and two custodians. So we also eliminated the Willet principal, but we will need to add a preschool director so that will save us money, but it will not, it'll be awash in terms of FTEs. So with all of those cuts that we made at the last meeting, our current budget deficit is $1.55 million. So that's where we start. And we, now we can go back and talk about some of the cuts.
Yep. Yeah, so let me just pull this one up here. All right. So, so a couple of things. If we go back to last week, you remember that I was recommending that we start with about $1.5 million worth of cuts in the budget subcommittee. The committee agreed as well to include varsity athletics into our number, which pushed that number up around 17, 1.7 million. The administrative team then went back earlier this week and was drilling down, and a couple questions came up. We're still going to need to eliminate five elementary teachers to have room for the kindergarten, but there are possible service provider issues we might encounter as we drill down. So perhaps ELL might be difficult to coordinate at the elementary level. We would still eliminate one middle school team, but in order to do it in the best possible sense, we might need to add some foreign language to that. So that would be a net of three instead of four elementary teachers. Again, that one FTE hanging on to that would be a net of four FTE in that. And then at the high school, you know, we do want to rearrange and kind of restructure some of our offerings, and especially, you know, with career pathways, being able to expand that. So we want to pull that back to 2.2 FTEs at the high school level. So that kind of drops, and you can see that it does drop the final number to that 1.5 million that we were originally going to start with mainly because there's a lot we don't know, as the chair advised us last week. We still don't know GIC numbers. We're still waiting for some more revenue numbers, perhaps from other sources, so it's probably best not to go too far too fast. So with this, so we've pretty much done everything on this list except for the staffing. And if you add those three numbers together, it comes out to another $595,000 out of our So with that, we want to...
Michelle?
Yeah, just a question because I don't understand with the middle school, with the reduction of a team and why you need foreign language. I just don't understand what you mean by that.
Well, because you would go from three teams to, two teams? Moved on me. Three teams to two teams?
Would you like to join us, Dr. Frazek? Thank you for coming tonight.
Of course. So we would look at reducing one team, which is four teachers. In order to do that, or the best way to do that, in order to keep our class sizes where we want them, in that 22 range that we have them at now, we would reduce an eighth-grade team, which means that we would take 250 students and split them into four, core subject areas. What we already have in eighth grade is that students already take foreign language every single day. So what I would actually do is place two foreign language teachers on my eighth-grade teams, making them five-person teams. So now students, 125 students divided by five teachers, 25 students in a class, which is much closer to what we want. That may create, and I'm not going to pretend, like I have looked at all the, the different machinations, I only have five foreign language teachers total to do three grades. They do it every single day in eighth grade and every other day in sixth and seventh grade. So in order to make sure that I can still offer it every other day in sixth and seventh grade, which I think is key, I might need a .5 or .6 foreign language teacher. So it kind of puts it in there. And I might, there'll still be some kind of a hole that, that needs to be filled for eighth grade, because if I take away Mustang Walk and add something in, I get almost all the way. I don't really want 250 eighth graders kind of on their own for any, any portion of the day. So we might need to add like another, like a .4 technology teacher that they can all do computers for that other piece, or gym, we might increase gym, you know, still kind of looking at what those pieces are, but hopefully that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Well, since Michelle started with the middle school, maybe that's a good place for the committee to start the discussion. Any questions, comments on reducing the middle school by a total of three FTEs? Michelle?
Yeah, I think before, at least before I begin to vote with my school committee members, I want to make it clear what I do and how I vote. That has nothing to do with my duties and responsibilities as a school committee member. So I want to make it clear, because there were some emails back and forth to me about I'm not following my responsibilities. And I'm very well aware of my duties to bring forth a balanced budget, but I'm not going to bring forth a balanced budget if we don't have the money. So it's, I'm here voting no against athletics, because I think that's an outrageous cut and I don't believe in it. So therefore, I would think that that's the right thing for me to do. It is my responsibility to bring forth a balanced budget, without a doubt. But it's not my responsibility to find that money or balance the budget. So what I'm saying is that I think maybe we should look at other ways to balance that budget. My idea is maybe what we need to do is go to the town before we go to the override. And go to the town and say, "We don't have the money. We don't have the money. Can you help us?" I know that there's free cash, though people say there isn't free cash. There's a, I think it's 1.6 million. I probably wouldn't want to touch the 3 million of stabilization because of the, the bond issue and all of that. But my thought is, I can't vote for something that I don't think we should be doing. I can't vote to eliminate athletics. I just can't vote to do that. So if I vote to do that, then I'm really saying to the public, "I'm okay with that." And I'm not. So that's where I come in, and I get all kinds of, "How do I figure this out? What do I do?" So my thought is, maybe we should go to the town and ask a town meeting for money. Maybe that will help us. You know, there's a possibility the override may not pass. So, you know, what is, what's at stake at us, for us, if we don't ask the town first? And if the town says no, then we continue with our override push. But that, that's where I struggle. I struggle with the vote, and you saw my votes last week. There were a lot of 4-1, 4-1. And I just want to make it clear to you that I'm not going away and shirking my duties as a school committee member. I'm very, very well aware that we are assigned to balance the budget. I'm very, very well aware of that, and I take that very, very seriously. But I can't morally, ethically, professionally, as an educator, go along with these votes. So to me, my push is, let's go to town meeting. Let's ask town meeting. We, we're stuck. We have no money. Everybody's saying it. So why not ask for it? And let, let the town meeting members. And maybe I'm crazy. Maybe you all think I'm nuts, and it'll be all over Facebook, "She's lost her mind," or whatever. But I'm just speaking from my heart. I'm speaking from my education. I'm speaking from, for the town in Norwood. I'm speaking for our kids, as Mrs. Wellesley speaks, and all of us do. But I always try to look for solutions. And the prop, the override, I understand it, I get it. I'm not saying I'm for it, I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm not there yet. But I'm saying, "Why can't we try that? What's wrong with asking our town for the money?" So I just want people to know, when I vote, that you understand that I take my job very seriously, and I understand we have to balance it, but I also want you to understand that I'm trying to look for another possible solution.
I'd just like to address the question of asking the town for more money. I will assure you that Maura and I have been doing that at, as part of the budget balancing. We have been looking for, you know, are there other sources of revenue? Are there other ways to do this? You are right that there is 1.6, 1.7 million dollars of free cash currently in the, the free cash pot. Typically, we spend a significant amount of money every year on snow and ice. This year has been not a horrible winter, but I know that the last, I think as of last week, the schools were already over-budget on snow and ice, and that doesn't count what happened last night. And it doesn't count the other bills that may not have come in yet. So we are already going to be asking for some of that free cash to make us whole for this current year. And I'm sure that the town will as well, that they're going to, hopefully not go horrendously over-budget, but there will be needs there. And typically, we have tried to keep at least a half a million dollars in that free cash account so that if something really unusual happens, then we have, there's some cushion there. I know that there's at least one other department that is seeing overruns and will be asking town meeting for money. So it's not that I think it's a terrible idea to ask for some support at town meeting. I, I definitely agree. I just think we still, even with all the cuts that we made... think we still, even with all the cuts that we made, we still have a 1.5 million deficit. And there was only 1.6 million dollars in free cash, and I know there's some other demands on it. So I don't think that we can completely solve this problem. Should we ask for some relief? Yes, I agree. But I don't, I'm very nervous about the people getting the idea that there's enough money there to solve this problem completely. Maura?
Just something that occurs to me, that I think, I think Mrs. Mullin really hit the nail on the head. We don't have the money, and we need to ask for support and help with that, and ask the town, right? That's what we're doing with the override. In a lot of ways, that is what the override is, is we're saying to the town, we need more money. Can you help us? And I think that that's, I just, it strikes me that she so articulately presented that fact, that we don't have the money. And I think, just as the chair said, neither does the town. So it is, I think, in a lot of ways, I agree with the president and the comment, and I think that it's, that's what we're doing with the override, is asking for that help. Because just as she said, morally and ethically, these aren't right.
Right.
Sure. Yeah, so I want to point out a couple of things. We are kind of going at this, you know, in stages, in pieces, to be thoughtful about this process. And, you know, and these cuts are not going to get us all the way there, hoping that there is some pieces that come together in our favor. You know, so I just want to point that out, and that this is, if an override doesn't pass. So as I, you know, when I went to the Willet last Thursday and spoke to the wonderful staff there, you know, I told them, effectively, that, you know, I really hope that the last four hours talking about, you know, these cuts was really a waste of time, because the town comes forward and fixes this. And the last thing I will remind everyone out there is that this is not the end of this. It continues, where there's 650,000, predicted 650,000 dollar shortfall going into next year. And still, that is not fixing any of the problems that we have historically had, the cuts that have not been replaced, the curriculum that has not been put into, into the budget. This level service is actually a below-level service budget. It does not include the ELA curriculum that we need desperately. It does not include anything except our personnel costs. Our supplies are back in there. We do have the Chromebooks in there. That's a commitment we've made to bring technology and that personalized project-based learning into our classrooms. We're starting to see significant change in there. And there's snow and ice in there. There are no requests in there for things that we need. There is no curriculum in there. There is no ELL curriculum in there. So this below-level service budget, we are cutting to meet a number. And next year, we're going to be short 650,000. The year after that, another 650,000 of more cuts, still not fixing the problem. And it continues for five years. So I just want to take this opportunity to keep banging that drum, I guess.
Any further comments on that?
Let's, since we started a little bit of the conversation about the middle school, let's start with that. That suggestion, as Dr. Thompson had said, these are not exactly recommendations from the administration, but these are suggestions. And so the suggestion would be to reduce the middle school overall salary line item by three FTEs with the exact configuration to be determined by the administration as they work on the schedule and determine the best way to do this. Is there a motion to make this reduction? Thank you, Maura. Is there a second? Thank you, Teresa. Is there any further discussion? Maura?
Sure. So a couple of things I want to say. I want to thank Dr. Frazek for coming up and sort of talking about how you might adjust if these cuts do go through, if the override doesn't pass. So I thank you for sort of, it made it make sense to me a little bit more. A couple of things, just to be clear of what we are talking about eliminating here. We've had some issues at the middle school. And this is now a building that has turned around and is really doing, you know, quite remarkable things. Not that it wasn't before, but it's, it's, it's really made some strides. And we're about to vote to start to dismantle that. So I don't think anyone is really in favor of that. And also, I think, I have no doubt that the incredible staff down there will do everything they can to make it, to make it work. And just as Mrs. Wesley said, hopefully the children won't know. I mean, they will notice that the staff is different, but they will understand that they're still getting the same level of education. But let's be real with what we're talking about. If we're eliminating a team, that is three less educators that are watching out for our children, right? And that's three less educators that are trying to identify children who might need extra help. That's three less sets of eyes that can be there to help a student who is struggling. So I think we should just be aware of what that, that means.
Any further discussion? Michelle?
Are the teachers going to be teaching five classes or four classes with this reduction?
Come join us again? Yeah. We can hear you just fine in the room, but the...
No, that's fine. The eighth grade teachers would be teaching five. The sixth and seventh grade, we wouldn't change the structure of how their teams are.
Thank you.
Any further questions, discussion, before we let Dr. Frazek go? Why don't we, all right, put it to a vote? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries three to one.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Frazek. Shall we talk about elementary school? Dr. Thompson, would you like to talk about recommendations for elementary school?
Yes, we're recommending that we unfortunately eliminate five elementary classroom teachers, but four FTEs. And again, the thought is, is that one FTE we might need at this point to provide either English language learner services, or perhaps special ed services. And again, with the proposed reconfiguration, it kind of tips the seesaw, so to speak. So instead of doing all five and then coming back and asking for a half of this and a half of that, we'd rather just say four and drill down.
With the reconfiguration that we have discussed, it would be eliminating one classroom at each grade level, grades one through five, across the district.
I'd have to, I'd have to look back at the... So this is, this is that slide. See if I can get it bigger.
Bigger would be helpful.
Bigger would be helpful. Yeah, so there'd be one at grade one, one at grade two, one at grade three, one at grade four, and one at grade five. Yes, you are correct. I just wanted to go back and check that before I...
Yes.
And unfortunately, you're taking classrooms and you're squeezing them into our elementary schools. We need to have, there's some rooms, we're going to lose art rooms, we're going to lose music rooms, going to have those in the carts, but we still need at least five classrooms in order to do that. Less than optimal.
Yes. Is there a motion to make this reduction? Okay. Teresa, thank you for the motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Maura. Any further discussion?
I can't hear you.
Okay, I'll try to speak up more.
I can't. I can't hear you, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not speaking, but yes.
Any further discussion on this cut? Teresa?
Just a question. That previous slide with like closing the Willet and the redistribution, are we pretty confident that that is where each reduction will happen? So obviously, I know it doesn't mean that teacher in that classroom, but like it will definitely be one less first grade at the Bulge, one less second grade at Callahan. Like the administrators have gone through that, that you feel confident that that's the age groups we're talking about?
Yeah, pretty, pretty much. But, you know, we're also talking about some of those numbers, and perhaps, you know, how do we swing some of those numbers? So we might change some of our lines and some of our places to equal them out. You know, I don't want to get too far into that at this point, because we're just starting to scratch the surface on that. But this is not the end-all and be-all. We have more work to do.
So tonight, we say five, not five, three.
Right. Well, we need five rooms.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's, that's the reality. So we need, we need five places minimally. So...
Did you have further questions, Teresa, or should I?
No.
All right. If it comes up, if you have another question, you can ask after we talk about, call on Michelle.
So as long as I've been on this board, and as long as I've been a teacher and educator and a curriculum coach, I would never, ever cut teachers and increase class size. And I'm going to stick to my truths and my beliefs and say that, you know what, we need to dig deeper and not let these teachers go. I mean, I just, there is no way that I will, once again, vote, vote for something that I truly do not believe in, and I truly think is a detriment to our school system. So, you know, I'll walk away from here with the same mantra that I walked into, is that I will not cut classroom teachers or increase class size.
Any further questions, comments? Maura?
Yeah, thank you. So one of the things that we were doing with these eliminations of staffing at the elementary schools is we're trying to make room for the kindergarten, since we can't afford to keep the Willet open. So what we're going to do is we're going to take some schools, you know, a number of which are already bursting at the seams, and we're going to make them larger, but we're going to reduce the number of staff that's there to help support those students. And just to be clear, if these projections hold, which what seems to happen, actually, is that we have more students move in. One of the smallest, the smallest class size we will have district-wide is 17 students in a Cleveland grade one classroom. The largest that we will have district-wide is 26.7 students. I'm not totally confident how we have a .7 of a student, but, and that's grade four. 26 seems rather high to me, and I would assume to many others. We will also have kindergarten classes around 26.5, 26.5, 20.7. So we don't, these are best guesses, because obviously kindergarten students are done registering, and we likely do actually have increases. So just as Michelle said, we are eliminating staffing, but increasing the number of students in our schools. And as every indicator that has been put in front of me about early education signals during my time in this board, that that is the time when we need more support staff around those young learners, to help identify those who might need extra help, who might need early intervention. And if the entire point here is to try to think, to be forward-thinking, and how can we move forward as a district, you know, everyone sort of gets all up in arms about how much it costs for an outside placement, well, think about all the outside placements you're going to be missing, because you don't have enough staff in your schools to spot and support those early learners. So we don't have a choice. We're legally mandated to balance a budget, but we are going to have class sizes in the 26s, and we are reducing staff. So that doesn't seem like a recipe for success to me.
Any further comments or questions, Teresa?
Yeah, I mean, I said a lot about this last week, so I won't bore people with it again. But this was one of the reasons why I didn't vote for closing the Willet last week, because I just didn't feel, and I still feel, I feel sucker punched in my stomach right now. I just don't feel confident in the ripple effects of it. But the decision was made to close the Willet, and that was made by the majority of the committee. And we do have protocols that, you know, then as a committee, will honor the vote of the majority. So that vote was made, and there really is no possible way to move K into these other schools without reducing staff somewhere, because, you know, as we talked through last week, there just isn't the physical space. I still worry a lot about the Callahan. So, you know, the same thing I said last week. I think that in addition to K going into the schools, we have to look at Old Hand being K to two, and Callahan being three to five. I just, I really, really worry about the Callahan losing that one very small music and art room already, and it not being handicap accessible, and not having the elevators, and their class sizes going up in some of the smaller rooms in the district. I worry about Bulge, that we know is already bursting at the seams, and has lost some staff over the last couple of years. And now we're talking about the Bulge losing two more positions, if I'm reading this correctly. I worry about the Cleveland, because I know that they are also bursting at the seams. And 26 is just a really high number in any grade. And I know at the Prescott, there's also physical space constraints. So it's not ideal at all. It also goes against every single moral and value I hold. And this has been an absolutely horrible league, living with the votes that we had to take last week. So I do fully hear what you're saying, Michelle. It feels horrible to me. But I just don't know what else to do in this situation.
I would agree with you, Teresa. I, you know, I agree with what all of you are saying, that this is, does not represent the best education that we could offer our students. And, but faced with the cuts that we need to make, I think that I completely understand why this is the administration's suggestion, and I will support that. Michelle?
So maybe as a school committee, we need to stand together and stand strong and say, we do not have the money in the budget to do this. And we refuse to cut our teachers and the needs of our kids, and stand together instead of, and then maybe just keep digging deeper and deeper and deeper and deeper, until we find something that will, will help us. And then go to the town and start there. But I think by, by voting for these cuts sends different messages. It sends a different message to me. So if we stood strong and said no, what, what's the worst thing that could happen? We know we have to balance our budget. We will balance our budget. But what's, what's the possible worst thing that could happen? I mean, you know, I hear what everybody's saying, but then we vote for it. And it was like, you know, that's just not my thinking. So I don't know if we can stand together or not. I don't know if the committee would be willing to do that. You know, I'd like you to think about it and, and look at it in a positive way and say, you know what, maybe the town will help us at the town meeting, but that doesn't mean that we will get the full help. And maybe it does mean they have to go into stabilization if there's a 3 million dollar stabilization fund. The schools need our help, you know, and maybe then it would reduce the amount of the override so that we could help those that might not vote for it, because they have such a fixed income. And maybe it wouldn't affect them. You know, people say it's a dollar a day or whatever. A dollar a day to somebody could be a lot of money. So maybe if we got some help from the town, and then we didn't need this bigger override, it was a little bit smaller, then maybe the townspeople could help us. And then we're hitting the senior citizens. We're hitting the people who are economically disadvantaged, and they can maybe be able to do something to help us.
I definitely understand your concerns about that not everybody can afford this, the override easily. That is certainly a very valid point. But in terms of, if we make the cuts that we're proposing right now, we would still have a deficit of almost a million dollars. At that point, I think it's very appropriate for us to stop and say, we're going to go back to budget balancing. We're going to see what we can do to, to get through this. We can't, we need to have a balanced budget that will go into town meeting as part of the general operating budget. We could consider asking special town meeting to fund something separate from the general operating budget, if we chose to do that. I will tell you, though, that having sat at the Budget Balancing Committee and looking at those numbers, and looking at the projections for the structural deficit, and recognizing that we're only in this shape that we're in now, because we've put in a million dollars in, from Circuit Breaker, that if we don't find a long-term fix this year, if the only way we fix the problem this year is by going into the stabilization account, even assuming that town meeting would vote to support that, we will be in a much worse situation next year. That million dollar, we wouldn't have a million dollars in Circuit Breaker to add to the budget next year. There's another, the projections show that the problem will get roughly 650,000 dollars worse the following year. And then we would have less in our stabilization, because we've already rated it for this year. And so I certainly understand the instinct to say, let's, let's not do anything hasty. Let's try... Let's try our best to hold it all together as long as we can." But I have to say, I honestly believe that we've held it together as long as we could and maybe even a little longer than we should have, and now is the time to say, "This is a plan for a long-term solution." And if we do, if an override is approved, then none of these cuts happen. The improvements that we've talked about, like the English language curricul, well, the curriculum cycle, so that we expect the first year it would be the ELA curriculum, but then it would cycle through other things. There are other improvements that would go in, but even more, perhaps more importantly, the following year, we wouldn't be back in the same budget cycle. We would know that there were adequate resources to meet the needs. That doesn't mean that we go on a spending spree. The need, the growth of the schools has been projected over those five years, and we, over the five years, we were looking at average increases in school budget around 3.5 percent. Is that right, Anne Marie? The year-to-year increases?
Yep.
I think it started, maybe there was like a 3.6 year and then there was a, you know, but it's like averages out to about 3.5 percent per year. So if we can make the one correction, we can get to a point where we have a long-term solution. We can then do some long-term planning for our schools. We can end the exercise of sending everybody running around trying to figure out how we're going to make a cut every year. And I honestly believe that, over the long term, that is what's best for our students. Teresa?
Yeah, just to say, I know the administrators have worked really hard as a team on getting this number down as low as possible, how many FTEs we're talking about. You know, the one slide we looked at and some of the numbers that I helped put together with closing the Callahan, you know, if we closed the Callahan and kept the Willet open, we are looking at a reduction of 12 FTEs. So that was part of the reason why the Willet conversation happened, because by closing that building, we were able to save staff. And then through different variations of the expense spreads sheets that I saw, I think they started with closing the Willet, had the schools K through five with a reduction of 13 staff, and then they were able to work it down to eight, and now down to the proposal that we see. So I just want to acknowledge that a lot of work has gone into this and that I do think there is a collective, we don't want to lay off staff. Nobody wants to do this, and the numbers have been worked and reworked to get it down to now five, a net of four. And again, I just don't see another way with the numbers to get it down any lower, to not do this due to physical space in our schools.
Any further discussion before we put it to a vote? So, on the motion to reduce elementary teachers by four FTEs across the district, all in favor. Opposed. Motion carries three to one. Thank you. And then the last cut that I, is as a suggestion for us this evening, is 2.2 FTEs at the high school. Is there a motion to make this reduction? Thank you, Maura. Is there a second? Thank you, Teresa. Discussion, questions? We do have Dr. Galligan here, if anyone has questions for him. Teresa?
So, I think I'm clear, but just to make sure. So the reason we're now looking at the net of 2.2 is because of the grant that we received and the grant initiative around the career pathways and wanting to be able to grow back programming. So we may need to retain or increase staffing in certain areas to do that.
Right, and that is, and that is part of the override ask, is people to do, to replace teachers the high school has lost, do two things. One is the AP piece, solving that. We have a lot of kids who want to take them. We don't have enough teachers to do it, and also that career pathways. But this 2.2 would allow some correction in our electives and give some legal room for the career pathways. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Dr. Galligan?
Yeah, I think that this just gives us a very limited amount of flexibility. If this kind of worst-case scenario were to come to fruition, we'd really be forced to look at our course requests as students move through the course registration process over the next couple of months and see where our most gaping holes are. We anticipate if those, if we do lose 3.2 FTE, most of those are, it's going to jeopardize our ability to offer some in-demand and necessary electives, and we're going to have to see where that, where the course registration and requests come in and where, what we need to do to fill some of that. We look at the potential loss of extracurriculars, fine arts, and athletics, and, you know, that's the, you know, I think about a lot of our kids, and that may be the reason that they come to school, you know? That's not an overstatement. And I think that the least we could do is see what requests come in and try to honor as many of those as possible, and this would allow us a little bit of flexibility to try to do that.
Maura?
Yeah, Dr. Galligan. I am hesitant to ask this question, so I sort of request that you answer it as broadly as possible, because I don't want to identify any programs and I don't want to identify any teachers. That's not why I'm asking this. But with the middle school cuts, the way Dr. Frazek phrased it in terms of how she would make up for that lost team, I sort of understood the ripple effects of that. The handout that was given about the reductions at the elementary level being split up between the five grades, at least then I know that not one program is going to be, or one grade level is going to be unduly impacted over another, so I can kind of understand the ripple effects there. I, it might be possible that without identifying anything, which I do not want you to do tonight, it's not possible to answer this, but in what ways do these 2.2 FTE cuts, what is the ripple effect of that? How are you going to sort of fill that loss?
Sure. It would impact our ability to offer electives in the areas of social studies, in the areas of business, in the areas of computer science, and in science as well. And it would increase our class sizes in 11th and 12th grade core math classes. That would be the impact of those moves, and that's been discussed with the high school staff and things like that.
So it's social studies, science, business, computer science, and increasing class sizes, 11 and 12 math. Do you have any idea what those numbers, you may not know this, but around what will the increase be in terms of class size?
It's not, I would say, on average, we project about a five student per core 11th and 12th grade math class increase, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, and it's not, you know, high school scheduling is never even.
Right.
It's not like you can say, "Okay, we've got 100 students that want this class. It's four sections of 25 in each," because then you're not meeting course requests elsewhere.
Right.
So, it's not like we could say, in those math classes, we'd have, you know, 24 in each, but on average, we're expecting, we'd expect an increase of about five per in 11th and 12th grade core math classes.
Okay. And do you have any idea what that would bring those numbers to?
Above, definitely above the 24 cap that they have now. We try to cap most of our core classes at 24, push them closer to 30, though, for sure, in a lot of cases.
Math would be closer to 30.
In 11th and 12th grade core classes.
Okay. And just so I'm clear, 11th is the grades when juniors, it's a pretty high priority in terms of where colleges look, correct?
That is true. Absolutely.
I'd like to remind the committee that, as Dr. Thompson shared last week, when we looked at the school staffing study over the, you know, back to, looking back to FY10, at the high school level, in terms of general education teachers, the high school is down by 4.88 FTEs since 2010, and the enrollment is relatively flat in that time period. Maura?
Just also another question, because I just don't have it in front of me, but math in terms of MCAS courses is someplace we've been struggling with at the high school. Is that right?
That's correct.
So, having class sizes up to 30 will probably not help that fact. Is that correct?
Yeah, and that's why, you know, looking at the situation, the decision would have been made to see an increase in class size in 11th and 12th grade classes as opposed to 9th and 10th grade classes. That's the rationale for that. And that potential 1.0 that's, could be added there. Added's not the right word, but you know what I mean? Could potentially account for some of those needs that we need in terms of supporting some of our most at-risk students in the earlier grades with math and science, MCAS preparation, things like that.
Teresa?
I know there's been some discussion amongst different areas of the struggle between being able to meet the graduation requirements and then also provide AP and other classes for students who want and need those, and does this impact at the AP level?
It would.
It would. So, just as a reminder, that presentation Dr. Wyeth gave us on the new accountability standards, that would hurt how we're rated.
High-level courses, yes.
High-level courses, yeah.
And, you know, I think it would hurt all aspects of accountability, as I spoke about last week. I think it would jeopardize our ability to see increases there. And over time, some of them, you might see more quickly than others. Other impacts that are negative, you might see over a longer period of time, but none of these help the situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't, you know, I wasn't trying to dismiss you or anything like that. I just wanted to.
Would you like?
Thank you. There may still be questions. Any further comments, discussion? Maura?
Yeah, just a couple of things on these reductions. I want to point out something that Dr. Galligan just said. These cuts will adversely affect our most at-risk students, those who need our support more than any other. And I would also remind just everyone who's within earshot that you must pass the MCAS test to graduate, and if you do not have a high school diploma, that will negatively impact you for the rest of your life. These cuts will impact our ability to offer electives in business, social studies, computer science, and science. I think probably the core bedrock of the 21st century economy, where our students will be attempting to get jobs. So, 11th and 12th math will be going closer to 30. Obviously, everything you've ever heard on this committee says that smaller class sizes benefit students. So we're going to make math, which I was terrible at and didn't ever want to ask a question and tried to hide. So it's going to make it harder for our incredible staff to find those students who might need extra help in a subject that we're already being told by state testing we're struggling in. So, yeah, I think, I think sometimes it's hard to look at the high school and say, "Well, you know, 2.2," but keep in mind, they're also already down 4.88, and we're already in a situation in our high school where our students who are working the hardest, we don't have seats for them in AP offerings, which is what colleges are looking at, and we're going to make it more difficult for them in 11th and 12th grade math, which is, again, somewhere that colleges are looking at very highly, and we're going to make it harder for our students to compete in the 21st century economy.
I would like to thank the administration for being cognizant of the cuts that are being discussed across the district and trying to spread them somewhat evenly across the district. I recognize that if we eliminate fewer than three positions at the high school, then they will sort of see less of a cut per grade, per student than the middle school and the elementary levels. But I also want to remind everyone that by eliminating high school athletics, that I, well, high school athletics I'm mentioning because that impacts only the high school. Also, fine arts, which probably impacts the high school more so than the middle school and the elementary school, but has impacts all the way down. The activities impact both the middle school and the high school, so, you know, the high school has already seen some significant cuts in this process. Do we have a motion yet? Okay, so we have a motion to reduce by 2.2 FTEs?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, so seeing none, I will put it to a vote. All in favor of reducing by 2.2. On favor, aye. Opposed. Motion carries three to one. Thank you very much. By my count, I believe we are now a little below $1 million in our deficit. I would like to suggest that we make a motion to table this budget until after the budget balancing meeting, which will be on March 6th. The GIC, as we talked about, the group insurance numbers will be available, we'll have more information on that February 28th, I believe, sometime at the end of the month, but before the March 6th meeting. So that would mean that we would not look at the budget without an override at our next meeting, but we would pick it up again at our, excuse me, March 13th meeting. So is there a motion to table? Thank you, Michelle. Is there a second? Thank you, Maura. All in favor? Unanimous. All right. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Thompson?
Yeah, I just want to take a quick second, maybe kind of going back into FY20 non-override budget, and thanks to me, this has obviously been very difficult. It's been very difficult for the administrators. It's been very difficult for the staff through this process, you know, and again, hoping this is time or cuts we're not really going to have to deal with, but the administrative team is going to just get down, drill down deeper into this, start getting into how we would pull it off, because this is going to be, if the override does not pass, would be a Herculean effort to get all the pieces in place for the beginning of September. And I just want to say something about teachers. No one here wants to reduce teachers. They are the key ingredient to what we do. These people, we hire, we spend a lot of time with them, you know, bringing them into the system, investing in them with professional development, course reimbursement, to make them the best they can be in the classrooms and provide for our students. When you lose a staff, you also take a step back for that investment that you've put into them, and it is always difficult to, you know, have that conversation with someone that you've hired, that you care about, you've seen their good work, and I don't want that to be lost on anyone else in there. At this point, moving on to the superintendent report, I'm going to ask Dr. Wyeth if he would update us on the work of the ELA Curriculum Committee and the Social, Emotional Learning Task Force.
All right, yeah, thank you. So our ELA committees met several times, I think, since I last reported out to you, and I put in your packet the last time, the mission, vision, the vision, mission, and strategies that the committee put together for that work going forward. And I would like to thank the committee. Diane Farrar is a co-chair with me on that work, and I'd like to thank all the teachers publicly who have been participating in that. We've got good cross-school and grade representation on that committee. So, excuse me, I'd like to share the vision with the public. "All students will become skillful and thoughtful readers, writers, speakers, and listeners across all curriculum areas." And the mission is twofold. One is to provide all students with a developmentally appropriate, comprehensive literacy program that consists of two things: best practice instruction in all components of reading, writing, speaking, and listening across all content areas, and, secondly, up-to-date print and electronic resources to meet the varying needs of our students. And the second part of our mission is to provide all educators with effective and sustainable professional development and ongoing support in all areas of literacy instruction. And the strategies that we identified for accomplishing this mission, the mission and vision, are threefold. One, primary, provide teachers with up-to-date and authentic print and electronic resources to meet varying student needs. That means leveled reading materials, age-appropriate technologies for progress monitoring and intervention. And number two, provide teachers with adequate time for collaboration and planning for differentiating instruction, assessing, and reviewing student work. And three, periodically review all our overall literacy program resources and effectiveness. That's a schedule that we've kind of fallen off with this particular curricular area, the elementary literacy area. So we want to try to avoid that from happening in the future. So this vision, mission, and these strategies are future. So this vision, mission, and these strategies are developed to help guide our selection of the programs that we're going to be reviewing shortly. So our next step with the ELA committee is we're going to be asking some vendors to come in and talk about their products. And so I can just quickly identify some of the ones that we've tapped from other districts. We collected information from what the other districts are using at the elementary level, and we've done a lot of other network beyond that. So we'll probably be bringing in three providers. One is Pearson is always a big provider in this, which is our math program publisher. So we'll probably look at MyView. That's one of their newest programs for elementary literacy. And we'll be looking at eleducation.org, something that our committee looked at and found kind of captivating and interesting. We'll look at Wonders. We had some teachers go to other districts and they're using the Wonders program. And ArcCore is yet another. So we've got sort of four publishers that we're thinking about. And we'll certainly also bring in folks from Fontas and Pennell and Lucy Cawkins to talk about those programs and how, you know, we might take them into consideration. And also, we've had some staff take some more professional development with Empowering Writers, which is a very respected writing program that a lot of other districts use. And so that's yet another piece that we're going to be looking at and talking about as we go forward. So our goal is to sort of look at the field and try to narrow it down to a program and resources that best fit our vision, mission, and our strategies that we identified. So that's it on the ELA front. On the social emotional learning front, our task force is sort of divided up into school-based task force, because in order to fill out a survey that is part of our Safe and Supportive Schools grant that we got for $7,500 that I mentioned to you earlier. And so that money will pay a group of teachers at each of our schools to take a look at this self-assessment tool and try to figure out what their greatest area of need is. And then that will come back to the task force and we'll sort of talk about how can we sort of move forward, you know, for individual school needs, but also for a systemic kind of purpose. And then secondarily, we'll be looking at materials that can support our social emotional programming. So we're beginning to identify some publishers there as well. Currently, we use Open Circle, which is, I think, a lot of teachers love. And they just are thinking, maybe we need to have a refresh on that at the elementary level, and take a look at a couple of well-respected programs at the secondary level, namely Second Step, Responsive Classroom, and there are a couple of others that we might consider bringing in to present to us. So that's where the social emotional task force is right now. We're waiting to hear from the schools and what they find out in terms of their particular needs with this self-assessment tool. So I can take questions about any of those two. And I might just do a quick update on the Fuse Fellow Part Two when the time comes. But let me pause there and sort of take any questions there might be about the ELA or SEL work to date.
Teresa?
What's the ELA timeline for after you review those curriculums?
Yeah, ideally, we would like to identify a program or two to pilot in the spring. You know, so part of the budget that the superintendent put forward is, you know, curricular materials for elementary ELA. In addition, we're going to continue to finish up the foundations work. So we need Grade One and Grade Two foundations PD for the fall of next year. And that's, you know, we've got to do that without question, because we've gotten a great start with kindergarten and we need to follow that up. So we've got some serious curricular needs on the horizon that are important for our kids and PD that's required for our staff to accompany that.
Any other questions from the committee about the ELA curriculum or the... Teresa?
One more. So for the SEL, it's been a while since I've been able to join you guys on Mondays. Mondays are just hard for me.
You've been busy.
Just a bit. So at some point, that task force was talking about, obviously, starting in the schools, but then doing parent education. Any recent discussion around when that component might happen?
Yeah, we, that's probably next year's work.
Okay. Just so you know, and I should have emailed you, but I'm just remembering now. So Aubrey Coyle at Impact Norwood, I was at a steering committee meeting this morning for Impact Norwood, and they are interested in doing parent education around social emotional learning, and they have some grant funding. So we should talk to them. One more ready to do that piece.
No, Impact Norwood could be a great partner, I think, in this work, yeah. It'd be great. So, other questions? Quick update on Fuse Fellows Part Two. We've identified two teachers that are interested in being Fuse Fellows. And so now the ball is in the tech collaboratives' court. They're trying to identify who in all the collaborative districts want to put forth additional fellows. And then they're going to figure out what they can manage and afford. And they'll be getting back to us about that. And we're hopeful that we can sort of continue to grow that program, because it's been great so far. We had a meeting of our Fuse Fellows and early adopters, maybe it's a month ago now, to just sort of assess what we've done and where we're going and what we've learned. And that was, you know, a very helpful meeting, I think, for everybody. And that's it on the Fuse Fellows.
Any questions? All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Wyeth. Dr. Thompson, anything else?
Yes, a couple of things. At your places are laminated copies of the strategic plan. There is also one on the wall over there as well. Figured it might be a little difficult to read from your chairs. Do you have one up close and personal? The other piece I'd like the committee to know is that there are also posters, a little different, they're more vertical, being hung up in each school as well. So this strategic plan is getting out and going on and around the district. The last thing is I want to thank Mrs. Farrar and the Bulge staff for hosting instructional rounds this morning. The administrative team went to the Bulge toward the school. They determined a question for us to go look at, which was, are we reaching the needs of the diverse learners in the school? We had an excellent, it was, I think, scheduled for an hour and a half. I think we were there for almost two and a half hours, and no one was checking a watch, because we had a great time coming together, seeing great instruction, and talking about teaching and learning. It should be our number-one process, not coming up with horrific cuts. But I want to thank the Bulge staff for having us. It is always, I really, well, I enjoy all the schools, but it really is amazing. I have not been able to be in the school for about a month and just seeing some of the growth in some of those kids. The last time I was in there just speaks volumes to their work and how hard they're working to make sure that they're meeting the needs of those diverse learners. I think that they got some excellent feedback from the administrative team. And it really, other places call them learning walks. We're not evaluating teachers. We're looking, we're answering a question they want, giving them feedback. And I think the administrative team will agree that we learn from coming together and observing different schools and different classrooms as well, especially when you have as many buildings as we do here. So that was a great piece and a great, great part of the week for us. And that, Madam Chair, concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Old Business and Facilities Committee update. You have in your packet a proposed budget for a facilities committee, for a facilities department, and a proposed memorandum of understanding. This would be between the schools and the Board of Selectmen to talk about how this would impact the, how we would work together with a shared facilities department. So I just want to let everyone, make sure everyone's up to date on the work of the facilities committee. The facilities committee met on Tuesday, January 29th. We had been talking about, for quite some time now, we've been talking about starting a combined facilities department effective July 1, 2019. That was some discussion. Given the, all of the various things going on in the town right now, the changes that might happen if there's an override, the munis conversion that we are going through at both the town and the schools, our financial software that we're using, we, the committee discussed the idea of perhaps pushing off the start of a facilities, a joint facilities department to January 1 of 2020. As a, so that's currently the discussion. In order to move forward with this, at some point, the school committee and the Board of Selectmen would both need to vote on this. We have not yet worked out the memorandum of understanding, so I'm not asking for a vote tonight. But the general idea would be that there would be a facilities department that would probably exist within shared services in terms of the town budget. And there would be a facilities director and some others. I think we talked about an assistant facilities director who would be another manager, and then some other people who would be brought in. David Hajar has worked out a staffing chart showing what that would look like. And he will be sharing large binders with all of you at some point with all of the details that he's considered, that, it's the chair of the committee that he has put together. And so the idea is that we would still have all of our custodians in our individual schools. They would just ultimately report up instead of just to a Buildings and Grounds Director for the schools, report up to a Buildings and Grounds person for townwide. I think many people feel that the schools have been managed very, very well in the area of Buildings and Grounds. When we did the long-range building study, that was something that AI3 commented on, that our schools are very well maintained. The, so I think that the impetus for this is not to correct anything that's happening at the schools. I think it's to spread the good management that's happening at the schools and spread it across the town. The town has many buildings that they manage. They manage Town Hall. They manage the Public Safety Building. They manage the DPW. They manage the library. And there are other smaller buildings in town that are also managed. And most of those buildings are currently managed by whoever is managing that whole department. So the library building is currently managed by the library director. And Town Hall is, in many ways, managed by Kathy Carney. And so there's thought that allowing those people to focus on their own core competencies and bringing someone else in to do professional management of the building would be beneficial in the long run. And the other possible advantage is that it would allow maybe some better shared services between them. So if, to the extent that we need to bring in plumbers or HVAC or people, things like that, that we can make better use of those services across the entire town. So I just wanted, I'm just updating the committee today. Certainly if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I'm not looking for a vote at this point. Maura?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you. On the memorandum of understanding, and I understand that we're not voting on this yet, but as the committee continues to work on it, I have a couple of things that concern me. Facilities Management Department, number one, there's a phrase, "The facilities director for all municipal facilities shall be appointed by the general manager after receiving concurrence by the school superintendent." And that phrase, "receiving concurrence," occurs several times within this. I almost wonder if it should perhaps read pending receiving concurrence, because otherwise it sort of just feels like the superintendent will give.
Right.
Into whatever. But I think the intent there, and I want to just make sure that that is clear. My other question is number seven. It is understood that the budget for the Facilities Management Department, when fully implemented, will be a shared cost as determined by the town's Director of Finance. I'm unclear as to why that's not determined by town meeting. Wouldn't it be the recommendation of the town's Director of Finance pending approval by town meeting? I don't think the Director of Finance gets to determine that. On his own. Off of the budget that we received, a question I have is I know that at this time, the schools have a dedicated electrician, for example. Would that dedicated electrician stay dedicated to the schools, or would he then be shared amongst all of the town buildings, which would obviously impact our ability to keep up our buildings?
Right.
So I would just like an answer to that question. And I know we also have some other outside contractors. I believe we have 29 custodians and six non-custodians, those six dedicated folks who are working specifically with our buildings. Are they going to stay specifically with our buildings, or are they then going to be shared? So if I could get some further answers on that, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Another, sorry, I don't mean to monologue here, but my other sort of question is, at what point, if it's been pushed back from July 1st to January, at what point do we need to give a vote to approve it to move forward?
We would, because it would have budgetary implications in FY '20, we would need to make a decision before, if it's going to get started at some point in FY '20, even if it's not July 1, we would need to make a decision about whether or not we want to move forward with that in time for the town budget to go to, you know, go through its whole approval process and all that. So, end of March.
So, just off of that, that makes me incredibly uncomfortable. I don't know how we can be expected to say, "We have to decide whether we want to do this," which I understand everyone, the intention of this is for everything to run more smoothly. And I'm not arguing with that. But we have 29 custodians, six non-custodians, including electrical, you know, dedicated people, and two directors and administrators who are dealing with our schools. So we're going to have to make a decision on this before we know whether or not an override has passed. And if the override has not passed, we're closing a school, moving all of those classrooms into buildings that we don't know how we're going to fit. And we're having upheaval in terms of munis, you know, how, what are we going to do in terms of closing down and storing our equipment for our athletics, which we own that we might not be using? I mean, these are all things that would fall under a Buildings and Grounds question. And I think with the uncertainty of so much upheaval in and around the override, I don't know how it makes, how it seems, it just does not strike me as being responsible to say, "We're also going to have massive upheaval in this other department," and to vote for that whether or not, before we know what the sum is even going to look like. I'm not actually asking for an answer.
Right, right. I've noted your concern.
It makes no sense to me, so there you go.
Any other comments, questions? Teresa?
I second everything Maura said. So I would, if you could take back to the Facilities Committee, that I don't think I can vote on this before we know what an override happens. So then what is Plan B? What does that mean? What, you know, does that mean that if we do go forward with this at some point, it's not until FY '21? So what does that look like? I know that this is still being worked on, the MOU. Number seven concerned me as well, just as Maura just pointed out. But also, the language, it's very heavy towards the general government side. And we're told this is supposed to be a collaboration, and I need to see that in writing. I don't want to be told it and then read something different.
Michelle?
Into the salaries, is there an increase in salaries here? I don't understand, like it says salaries in that third column.
Yes.
What is the salary for the person that will be running this facilities?
I don't believe that has exactly been, well, it certainly hasn't been voted on in any way. I think that Mr. Hajar has made a proposal, but I don't see it called out specifically on this sheet.
No.
And so I can't answer that question directly. But that is another question I can get you more detail on.
Because certainly if we're adding another administrator and increasing salary during this budget time, I think that's irresponsible as well, so.
To be clear, that increase would happen on the general government side, not on the school department side. But I agree that we're looking at a townwide budget problem.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say. I thought it was a townwide budget problem. So, you know, I'd like to know, what are the salaries being paid out? And how many, how many salaries are there going to be added?
Yes. Okay. Maura?
Thank you. Just, I understand the point of if the salary would be added, it would be on the general government side, not the school side. But if we're in a position that we're having to make these eliminations, then there are no additions anywhere. Because then you're saying... Because then you're saying we're balancing our budget on the backs of students while adding to another department. Does not sit right with me.
Michelle?
Yeah, and I think I said that too, when, when Mr. Hajar was here and presented it, that I'm certainly not willing to add an electrician if I'm eliminating teachers.
Yep. Just to be clear, the electrician we currently have, it's not, that would not be an addition?
No, but I think there was talk during that presentation.
There were talk of other positions that would be, yes.
Other positions.
Yeah, I just use that as an example.
Yeah, yeah.
When do you meet again?
That's a good question. I don't know that we have another meeting set at this point. I will notify you when I find out.
All right, thank you.
To be honest, this has all been kind of pushed, you know, we had a meeting, when did I say, January 29th? But there's been a lot of focus on a whole lot of other things since then.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
As there should.
Yes. Thank you. All right. The next thing I was going to talk about is the capital outlay committee. The capital outlay committee met for the first time sometime last week.
It was a Monday.
It was a Monday.
Give him up for that.
I think it was, I think it was February 4th. And so we have reviewed the, all of the capital outlay requests across the town and just taken an overview of it. Mr. Maloney has worked with Mr. Mizuko to put together a five-year plan for the capital outlay. And we've done that for years, that's been the practice, but this is kind of put together in a book that really calls out specifically what all the projects are and when they would be scheduled to be done. And the, as you will recall, the school committee had made a few requests for, for capital outlay, a vehicle for buildings and grounds, which was, is in the plan for FY '20, and some technology switches and things like that, and some teacher laptops, things like that. And those are also represented in the plan. The capital outlay committee will be meeting again, I believe, on Monday, March 4. And we will be making a recommendation to town meeting and looking at what would be paid from free cash and what would be paid from borrowing.
All right. Any questions about that?
All right, thank you. Dr. Thompson, we have a few, a couple of field trip requests?
Yes, we have two field trip requests. One is the All-State Music Festival. It is an overnight field trip. It's in Boston, February, February 28th through March 2nd.
Let's start with that one. Typically, we only see requests for out-of-state field trips?
I believe it says overnight as well.
Did we, oh, did, okay.
Yeah. There's a little confusion on that. But yeah, overnight trips should be.
Right. So again, we still have those two policies that don't agree, that we're working on at next meeting.
Oh, okay, all right.
But one question that I had asked Dr. Thompson via email earlier. So the policy says for overnight, we need 30 days' notice. Obviously, we don't, but it's my understanding that this has just unfolded because the students just auditioned and, and won this opportunity. So maybe not for discussion tonight, but just for something for the committee to think about when we do revisit those policies in two weeks, how we want to take that into consideration.
Yeah.
I believe the all-state auditions were Saturday, January 26th. So quite recent.
Yeah.
And, and students were not notified that day whether or not they had been selected. So it was a few, a couple more days.
Yeah, the actual, the actual, you know, what the costs were and that sort of thing came in the 1st of February, so.
So is there a motion to approve this trip? Thank you, Michelle, seconded by Teresa. Maura, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, first of all, want to congratulate the students who auditioned and were selected. They represent the absolute best of us, and I'm happy to, to give them my support. One thing that I, it sort of occurs to me that as we are revisiting this policy anyways, I wonder if there's a provision we could do for something like this where it's almost like a placeholder permission is submitted 30 days out, but then we give our final approval and sort of say that in these instances, that it's the pending approval of the full packet, but that we understand that the full packet can't come before us. I just feel like there are a lot of these instances, and maybe to build that into our policy might, might work out well. And I, I see that Mrs. Connermon is here, so just a congratulations, and if you could pass that on to the, to the students and staff as well. Is there any issue with the amount for what all these students will have to pay to go on the field trip? That, that's fine?
We take care of that.
We do. So we, we fund their, their trip that we have to, to give, so we are funding the success of our students.
Yes.
How wonderful. Thank you.
Is that the music boosters, or is that the district?
The district.
Okay.
All right, so any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll put it to a vote. All in favor? Hi, unanimous. Wonderful thing to celebrate. Thank you very much. And then, Dr. Thompson, we have another field trip request?
Yes, the eighth grade field trip to Canterbury Lake Park in Salem, New Hampshire in, on June 17th. So Dr. Frazek is above, is before the 60-day, she's ahead of the, but this is the, I believe is the annual end-of-year eighth-grade trip.
Is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Maura, seconded by Teresa. Any further discussion? Maura?
Yeah, I just think it's worth pointing out that this is a field trip we've done for many, many years, and that it's to celebrate our eighth graders. And something that Dr. Frazek has talked about quite a lot here is the ability to celebrate good behavior, because then you incentivize students taking responsibility for their education. And I do think it's worth pointing out that the teachers who have put in their time to put together this field trip are grade eight team teachers, which is something that may be impacted by budget cuts.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll put it to a vote. All in favor? Hi, unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Thompson, we have some donations.
Yes, we have two donations. The first is from Emily and Jeffrey Khalil, $75 for the CFCE playgroup at the Village House. And the second is from the Oldham PTO, $202.32 to fund enrichment programs.
Is there a motion to approve the donations? Thank you, Teresa, and seconded by Maura. Any further discussion? Maura?
Oh, yeah, Dr. Thompson, can you define the types of enrichment programs that are being funded by our PTO?
Well, I can't, because I didn't move on to, oh, do we, oh, we have the PTO president here with us, so.
Yeah, just school classes that we offer for our students.
Such as?
Such as, last, last session, we had scrapbooking, a four, four games class, yoga, after-school yoga. We did not do slime, no. We were slime-filled. We had a big kids' class, book club, and.
Thank you for, for, for your efforts, and please pass on our thanks to the rest of the Oldham PTO. And I think it's worth noting here that the PTOs and PTAs district-wide do a lot to support our, our students. And just another question, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but is it likely that next year, that these are the types of enrichment programs the PTO and PTAs would also be able to, to fund and would be looking to support?
It will depend on how much more we're funding. We're having to shift our funding over to other things. We just bought new rugs for our classrooms because our class sizes are so large that the kids no longer fit on our rugs. So they were sitting on the cold floor. We're funding 50% of the bus field trips and then covering the costs over $20 for our students so that they don't, no family has to pay more than. And then we're funding scholarships for all of the field trips for students who can't afford it. So our, our fun, our funding is kind of shifting to cover the deficit of the school department. So, I mean, hopefully we'll be able to continue covering enrichment, but it's looking more like we're going to have to cut back on that as our funding needs to.
Needs to be shifted to other places. I completely understand that. And thank you for clarifying that for both myself and for those at home. Thank you, and thank you for your efforts.
Teresa?
Just a quick comment on, on what was said. So one of the sessions at the MAS C conference in November, there was a pretty robust discussion around PTO funding of field trips. Because in Massachusetts, your field trips are supposed to tie into your curriculum. So if your field trip ties into your curriculum, it is part of the curriculum, and it should be funded by the school district. So we should not even be charging our students to go on field trips. Just so everyone knows that.
And these are all, and these are all field trips that are tied into each grade.
Right, right.
Motion to approve these donations? Thank you, Teresa, seconded by Maura. All in favor? Hi, unanimous. All right, Dr. Thompson, we move on to personnel.
We do. So new hires, people joining us. We have Jeanne Van Putten. She is going to be the new .5 aide at the Little Mustang Preschool Academy in our PACS program. Jennifer Zach is coming to us at Little Mustang Preschool Academy as occupational therapist. They both started the 11th of February. Retirements, our Director of Student Services, Paula Alexander, will be retiring effective June 30. In food service, Judith Bowman will be leaving us on the 30th of June. And Thomas Duggan, who is our Cleveland instrumental music person, will be leaving us at the end of June as well. So we wish all of those folks who are retiring all the best and thank them for their service. And that is it for personnel.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to school committee addenda. Michelle, would you like to go first?
I have nothing today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Teresa?
I have some stuff. Stay with me. I'm losing my voice, sorry. The last week has been a really tough one, with the meeting from the sixth on repeat in my head, and many of the conversations and interactions I've had since then have been challenging. I wrote something to prepare my thoughts and share tonight to address a few points. First, at the end of our last meeting, I said that I never felt like a worse human being. That was true. And then I went home at 10:30, and the first person I had to tell face-to-face about the decision made and the votes I took was my daughter. My 12-year-old daughter, who is very aware of the current fiscal situation. Some of you have seen her around town with me at events and meetings over the last few months. I do not make her come to these things she wants to come. She said to me a few weeks ago, "Mom, the decisions they're making impact my life. I have to fight." And when your daughter tells you she has to fight for something she believes in, you foster that and you bring her along. She's really proud of me for being on the school committee. And I have a relationship with her and my son that is fully based on trust and honesty. There isn't any topic that they can't come to me and discuss. And since so much of my time is invested in this role, they are very aware of what is going on. She expected me somehow, last meeting, to save the day. I did not save the day. She's still expecting me somehow to do so. But last week, I had to tell her, my 12-year-old in sixth grade, who is involved in drama club, band, jazz band, student council, and other activities at Coakley, that as it stands now, all those opportunities and others and athletics for her and all children are eliminated. I'll never forget the look she gave me or the way she said, "Oh, Mom, why?" Now, I am a firm proponent of sharing factual information and encouraging others to advocate for what matters to them. So as many of you in this room know, I have been really active in social media lately. I've been trying to empower others to speak up, and I've been sharing links and resources to the facts. This has come with many personal attacks and rude comments to me on social media, via email, and via Messenger. But that's okay. I may be an emotionally aware person, and I may speak of my emotions often, but that does not mean I am weak, and it certainly does not mean I'm going to back down from what I believe in. And I firmly believe that this town needs the override. I do, however, want to clarify one thing that was said about me. To those who've said that I am employing scare tactics, you clearly do not know me at all. I do not believe in those types of approaches, not in any aspect of my life, not professionally, not in this role, and certainly not as a parent. I would never vote on something that causes devastation to my child or any other child simply as a ploy. The second aspect I'd like to speak to tonight is related to the vote about the Willett. As you know, I didn't vote for it last week in favor of closing it. I just want to be clear that it's not because I don't trust the recommendations of the administrators. It's because I just was not ready from the research that I did and the data that I had to make a decision about any school closing last week. We, as a school committee, signed protocols two years ago, and we agreed, and I quote, "We will base our decisions on available facts, vote our convictions, avoid bias, and uphold and support the decisions of the majority of the school committee once a decision is made." That is what I was doing with my vote then, but I will now uphold and support the decision of the majority going forward. But also in our protocols, we have language around building trust and working collaboratively. So I do want to speak directly to Dr. Thompson, Dr. Wyeth, and all the administrators in the room, some who unfortunately left before we got to this. And I want you to know that my many questions always come from a place of me trying to make the most informed and unbiased decision, but it never comes from a place of mistrust. Related to the Willett conversation last week, I also wanted to amend something I said in case people misunderstood my intent. When I was discussing the building report from AI3 and the projected class sizes at some of the schools, being too large for the physical space, I was doing so because I think it is important for our community to understand the magnitude of the Willett closing. Moving kindergarten into the other schools will cause them to be significantly overcrowded. This is one of the important reasons why we need the override. I mentioned last week that some of the rooms at the Callahan in particular are only 600 square feet and not ideal for kids in kindergarten. What I want to be clear about tonight is that I do understand our administrators also recognize this, and will do everything they can to make any physical environment the best they can for our students. It was brought to my attention the day after our meeting that if the Callahan does house grades K through 5, most of that school will be entirely shifted around to enable the younger students to have the larger classrooms. I wanted to share this information tonight that was shared with me because I always want to speak from a place of being informed, and there is no shame in me telling you I know something now that I didn't know before. But again, to all our administrators, I trust you, and your work and your areas of expertise do not go unnoticed and are fully respected. And lastly, I want to make a brief but significant value statement regarding teachers. I have the utmost respect for educators. Your profession is one that often receives a lot of criticism and not enough support in our society, but I value the work you do every day. I know how much you matter, not just to your students currently, but to the students you have in respect to their long-term future. I hold education as a really high priority. I also consider relationships to be extremely important. To this day, I am still in touch with my kindergarten teacher, my fourth-grade teacher, my fifth-grade teacher, the chorus teacher I had throughout all of middle school, the teacher I had in high school for Spanish and French, the teacher I had in high school who was my National Honor Society advisor, and the teacher who was the advisor to the high school newspaper, as well as my high school basketball coach. They're my Facebook friends. They get Christmas cards from me. When I go home to Pennsylvania, I see them all often. I know that the relationships built in the classroom have the potential to change the lives of children. I know this on a deep personal level, but for those who may not want to take my word for it, there is extensive research that indicates this as well. If anybody wants that research, I think you know how to find me. To wrap up my comments tonight, to everyone in our schools, students, teachers, principals, other staff, I hold you in high regard, and during this process of needing to balance an insufficient budget, I want to clearly state, you are worth so much more than these budget conversations currently reflect. I wish Dr. Frazek was still here, because as Coakley Middle School staff did last week for their students on Positive Sign Thursday, I have a sign for you. You are worth it. You are worth every meeting I'm in, every single discussion on social media I partake, every hour of research I do, every single second I advocate for this out, this override. You are absolutely worth it. So thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Maura?
So I have three words that I would like all of us and all of the community at large to just sort of think about, and they are success, pride, and responsibility. We have a great deal of success in this town, and we celebrate that, and we have great pride in that. We have banners hung up in the high school for all of the different teams over the years that have won championships. The marching band appears at every parade that the town has, and I am at most of them. I love a good parade. And we cheer them on, we have our color guard there, we call them up, and we celebrate them when they win trophies. We put their pictures in the paper. When our sports teams win any large competition, I hear the sirens because our firefighters and our police escort them in to a hero's welcome. And we should take pride in that. That's the success of our children, that's the bedrock of our community. But then that last word, I think begs some questioning. Responsibility. We all love to see the marching band, but then what is our responsibility to make sure they still exist? We all love to go to the Thanksgiving Day football game, but what is our responsibility? Our responsibility is to adequately fund those programs. If we want to take pride in our successes, and we have quite a lot of successes, and we want to continue to be the town that everyone comes home to, I think we should stop and think about what's our responsibility to make sure that that place is still home. And I think that's through adequately funding our schools and our programs and our town. So if you want to be that place, then I think it's time for us all to look in the mirror and ask them, what is our responsibility?
Thank you, Maura. Tonight, I'd like to thank everyone for your work this evening, and I want to wish everyone a nice vacation week. I think many of us feel it's time for a little bit of a break. And so I hope that the students and teachers and administrators all enjoy a little bit quieter time next week, and we will see you back here in two weeks. So at this time, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Michelle, seconded by Teresa. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much.